All right. Testing. Thank you. All right, welcome to the regular meeting of our Cities Planning Commission, Thursday, March 24th, 2016. Good evening. Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. We'll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
The record reflect Commissioner Doe and Parker are absent.
All right. Okay, tonight's agenda. May we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, consent calendar, the items listed here, which are, I think we have what, one draft? Our draft minutes, action minutes from prior meetings, and we will be acted upon by one motion, well, there's only one, adopting the planning department's recommendation unless someone from the public, the commission or its staff, asks to remove an item or to discuss it. Do we have any, anyone who want, any issues with?
I have just one extremely minor comment, and sorry, I didn't notice this beforehand.
Sure.
But in the consent calendar, there is a summary of something I said. It says Commissioner Anderson said he was comfortable including materials processing as a land use in the Baylands, but said expansion as currently proposed would displace other elements such as the transit center. Not such as the transit center, things near the transit center, other things that would be desirable near the transit center.
Near the transit center, okay.
Oh, what page is that on?
Oh, what page is that on? Let me find it quickly.
That's on the...
Oh, page four.
Yeah, one point, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, okay.
It's on the first page, there's D, right, there it is, D1I4, yeah.
Could you repeat that for the record? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
D dot one dot I dot four.
But you're substantive.
Oh, the last few words says such as the transit center, and I actually was saying other items that would be desirable to have near the transit center, not the transit center itself. Because the recology isn't a destination for the transit center, whereas anything else there likely competing would be.
Good? Any other comments on the action minutes?
No.
You're good? Okay. So can we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar with the correction?
I will be a motion guy again, make a motion to approve the draft action minutes of February 25th, 2016.
Great.
I will once again second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next, oral communications. Okay. Okay, so are there any items, I guess, not on tonight's agenda that wish to be addressed? Well, you're coming up, you're on the agenda. Well, it's still an issue to be discussed, so yeah, you're number one on the list. So is there anything, is there anyone who wishes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, great. All right. So, okay, written communications. We've got one postcard here from the heart of San Mateo County for the recognition party on Wednesday, May 11th, and we also have an email here from a Hamisa, or, yep, Star Child, yes, regarding the Brisbane, Brisbane and Baylands housing issue from the last, from the prior meeting. Which I guess I could summarize in saying that they are approving housing.
Approve of.
Yes, approve of housing. All right, now, new business. Yes?
Yes.
Did I miss something?
No, no, new business, I'm sorry.
No, that's good, new business, here we go.
You want to read the agenda description, I jumped the gun, apologize.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, was that Ken? Or Ken? Oh, okay. Oh, the new business, oh, 124 San Bruno Avenue, all right. Design permit DP dash one dash sixteen and use permit UP dash one dash sixteen. Design permit and use permit to allow construction of an approximately 28-foot-tall two-story residential building to accommodate three condominium units ranging between 1,100 and 1,300 square feet in size and an attached five-car garage, altogether totaling approximately 4,044 square feet in floor area to replace an existing single-family home on a 5,679-square-foot lot in R3 Residential District. Jerry Cool, applicant, Robin Hubinsky, and Brendan Frost, owners APN 007 dash 282 dash 020.
It's not in our package, right?
It's not in your packet because it's recommended for continuance because the number of commissioners here this evening, one of the commissioners, Commissioner Anderson, would be disqualified because of his proximity of his home to the project site. We can't move forward with only two commissioners, so that's why it was recommended to be continued to the 7:00 PM at the April 14th, a regular meeting. Commissioner Minier has indicated he would not be able to make it for 7:00 PM start time on that meeting, so I'm gonna have to, we're gonna need to have a couple options.
Yeah, what do we have?
You have to continue to an alternative date. And the next regular scheduled meeting would be April 28th, beyond that. Again, that would be scheduled as a Baylands meeting, so again, the preference, if we are going to go to that date, would be to have a 7 o'clock start time. I don't know if that's acceptable to the commissioners required to achieve a quorum on this, I wanted to throw that out there. The other alternative is to schedule a special meeting, and there are only two dates in April that are free, the room is free, and that would be April 18th or 19th. So, and defer to the commission as to when they might like to continue this matter to. And I know you have the applicant might want to speak to this as well.
Yeah, I won't be able to make it 7 o'clock meetings.
Okay.
On any day?
Any day.
18th or 19th, so if we did a special meeting on 18th or 19th, a later time?
7:30 is fine.
A regular, regular start time.
So I need some time to get home and eat my dinner and then come, otherwise my mind will not be here.
Okay, so you can make 7:30 on 18th or 19th, of course, we have to confirm that with Commissioner Parker. Would the applicant like to speak, and as far as alternatives proposed?
I guess I'm unclear what it is about the 14th that, why couldn't we just start it at 7:30 like anything else?
So on the, well, on the 14th, Commissioner Minier is unavailable at?
7:30 is talking about?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you're saying just start a half hour, you start, you wanted to start a half hour early, why don't we just start at the normal time? And, I mean, it seems like, okay, just from my point, from my perspective, we submitted this on January 22nd. We were told we couldn't make the February 25th date because it wasn't a complete package, primarily because the tentative parcel map was not complete. I was told Monday that we're not going to need a tentative parcel map, so we got bumped for that. We were bumped on the 10th of March, the Baylands. Here we are today, 14th is our next available time. It seems like we're squabbling over a half hour here.
Mm-hmm.
Why couldn't we just put it in, put it on the 14th at the normal time?
Why was it not on today, tonight's agenda?
You don't have?
Cause it's in a quorum.
We need a quorum. So the 14th, so, yeah, can staff address that?
So the 14th is another Baylands meeting, and there's going to be a consultant coming in to give a presentation regarding the economic studies, that work will be available. I think it's going to be a very full evening, and, you know, I that would be the agenda management aspect of this, I mean, you certainly have that right, I don't know, you know, half an hour, 15 minutes, 45 minutes, I don't know how long this item will take, nobody can tell for sure, so.
And I'm out of town on the 28th, so.
Okay, so you're...
So let's make it for next year then.
So...
Well, you have to understand that those delays have a, you know, monetary impact on my client.
I understand that, I understand.
Well, what are the commissioners' thoughts as far as trying to fit it in on the?
Okay, what I'll do is, Jerry, I'll make my attempt to come on 7:00 PM, April 14th.
On the 14th, so we'll just do it at 7?
Yeah.
Can you make that?
I'll make it somehow.
Okay, thank you.
If I miss my dinner, I'll be here for you.
Okay, I'll bring some crackers and cheese for you at the break.
That will be fine.
You can eat at the counter, that's, okay, all right. Great, thank you.
Okay. That help you?
That will certainly help, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No problem.
Great. So, we'll add that to April 14th? Oh, could you come up to the? Yeah, you can come up, yeah, please come up and state your name and speaker piece.
Maybe just for the clarification of the speaker and the audiences, the only thing that's before the commission right now is the continuance?
Right.
Not the substance of the?
Oh, right, this is for the scheduling only of the event, or of this applicant, not the actual?
I got a letter in the mail that says show up at tonight at this time about the property that he's building.
Ah, well...
I'm just trying to address that, and the reason why I'm here, and I take time out of my schedule to bring kids and stuff.
I understand, I understand.
I'm just trying, tell me what to do.
Right. We have to, you'd have to wait until the 14th for the actual meeting. You can certainly submit your comments, the email, and we can read them out on the record for that night.
Would it be possible for you to come on April 15th?
Can you make it on, yeah.
If not, then you can...
I don't even know that far in advance.
If it's not possible, then maybe, may I suggest that they can submit it tonight, you know?
Well, they can submit their comments.
Yeah, I mean, he can speak tonight also if he wants, I guess, is it possible?
I mean, all I want to do is see the plans, because it's adjacent to my properties, I just want to see what Jerry wants to build, which I'm in favor of him building.
All right, well, if you, actually, if you have a request, simple, simply like that, that would be good for the record, so he could prepare and have that responses ready for the 14th.
It actually...
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's for me, my first concern.
Okay.
If I don't agree, then I'll be back.
And certainly you can always come in if you're available during working hours, all the plans are available at City Hall. Anytime during working hours, you can just come in and look at the entire application, and the staff planner can walk you through the plans, or you can contact Jerry directly, it's up to you.
That's good enough, thank you.
That'd be great, yes, thank you for coming down, taking the time, appreciate that. Good. All right. So good, so we noted the change to add it back to the calendar, okay, great, for the 14th. Okay, so, next item, new business, 80 Plumus Street, 108 and 118 Mariposa. Use permit UP dash two dash 13. Condominium plan approval for previously approved triplex now under construction on a 5,000-square-foot lot. James and, I can't remember all the names, how to pronounce the second name. Savannah? Savannah? Robert and Amy, owners APN 007 dash 223 dash 010. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. The applicant requests a use permit for condominium plan approval for newly constructed triplex at 80 Plumus Street, 108 and 118 Mariposa Street. By way of background, in 2013, the Planning Commission approved a design permit for the construction of the triplex at this site. At that time, the site was known as 60 Plumus Street. At the time of the design permit in 2013, the applicant had also applied for this use permit, but then requested that the application be continued pending the Planning Commission's approval of the design permit. This was so that the CCNRs and the condominium plan could be prepared based on Planning Commission-approved design. Following the commission's approval of the design permit, the applicant obtained a building permit for construction of the triplex, and the construction is now near completion. The applicant also applied for a tentative parcel map in 2013, however, an administrative lot merger of the two underlying subdivision lots which formed this single site, and the recording of the condominium plan itself will satisfy this requirement instead, and that's consistent with state law. So the lot merger will effectively substitute for the parcel map, and that's required as a condition of approval. The municipal code provides development standards for condominiums, and this application meets all of the required development standards as was outlined in the agenda report. To approve a use permit for newly constructed condominium, the Planning Commission must make two findings required for use permits. Since this is not an application for conversion from rental units to a condominium, the conversion provisions do not apply. So the general use permit findings, which are applicable to various use permits, various types of use permits, speak to the commission giving due regard to the adjacent uses and structures, and whether the use would have detrimental effects on the neighborhood or to the city in general. The use is consistent with the neighborhood and would not have detrimental effects, and it meets the findings, as was detailed in the agenda report. It would simply allow for the three housing units on this site, which were previously approved, to be bought, sold, and managed as condominiums rather than as rental units. This would not, again, this would not have a detrimental effect and would be consistent with the general plan and the zoning for this district. So in closing, staff recommends conditional approval of use permit UP 213, the adoption of the resolution containing the findings and conditions. Do you have any questions?
Great. Any questions, commissioners? Comments, concerns?
No.
Good, good.
Good.
Okay, so, we're all good with the recommendation of staff?
We want to open it up to the public.
Oh, sorry, yeah, right, oh, you want to come on down, open, so we have a motion to open public comment.
I make a motion to open the public comments, public hearings.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is James Cito, I'm a resident of Brisbane, and also I'm the owner and home builder.
Great, thank you.
Did you guys have any questions for me regarding this project?
I'll just, you can explain why you changed your mind from triplex to the condominium?
Oh, it was always...
What was the reason behind that?
It was always in the plan of establishing as a condo. The only reason why I delayed it was my surveyor, who actually did the condo plan and the survey map and everything like that, he told me that I couldn't actually do the condo plan until it was actually built or finished building, or at the process of building, and then later on, I talked to him, he said, "Oh, we can do it anytime," so there you go, basically, it's a delay from miscommunication or something like that.
Okay.
So did you have to resubmit the plans again, because that previously was for the triplex design, this is for condominium?
If I might clarify, so, when this first came to the commission, the intent was stated that it was to meet the requirements of a condominium, because that was his original intent. And, and so he was allowed through the design permit to obtain a building permit and construct it as a triplex that that could be a condominium if he, once he finished that application essentially and brought it back to you. Otherwise, it would have to be essentially rentals and under single ownership. So the intent was always there, this is essentially perfecting what his original intent was, if you will.
Good.
Thank you.
No more questions, thank you for coming down. We have a motion to close public comments, please.
I motion we close public comments, since everyone present has spoken.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so, we can...
He didn't want me to go all the way.
That's great, okay, so we can go ahead with, let's make sure I got the right one on here, there we go.
So now we have to...
So we can go through and approve, would you like to approve?
I make a motion to approve use permit UP 213 for 80 Plumus Street and 108, 118 Mariposa Street.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You are approved. Good evening. All right, now moving on to item three, public hearing, zoning text amendment, RZ 2-16, build to modify NAP provisions to Title 17 regarding massage establishments to distinguish them as separate from other personal services and specify zoning districts and procedures by which massage establishments may be allowed. Citywide applicant, City of Brisbane.
Yes, thank you. Request is to revise section, revise sections of Title 17 of the municipal code pertaining to massage establishments. By way of background, in 2014, City Council adopted comprehensive operational regulations for massage establishments. Those are contained in Chapter 8.10 of the Health and Safety Code. The regulations were not land use regulations, since at that time, the state had preempted most of the local land use regulations that applied to massage establishments. However, after the ordinance was adopted, after the city ordinance was adopted, the state adopted provisions which restored local land use authority concerning such establishments. The police department has raised a concern to City Council that there have been abuses in other communities where massage establishments have operated as a cover for illegal activities, and so they've requested more stringent land use regulations to provide additional tools to regulate them. Last July, the City Council adopted a resolution of intention to initiate this amendment, that's before you tonight. Currently, massage establishments are recognized by the city as personal services, essentially kind of a subcategory of those. And personal services are allowed as permitted uses in most of the city's commercial zoning districts. Also, massage establishments may currently be permitted as home occupations as long as certain performance standards can be met. For home occupation applications, all uses are reviewed relative to performance standards, so there's no set of, a list of permitted or conditional uses, so it's all performance standard-driven. With that in mind, the proposed amendment would do three things. First, it would define massage as a distinct use from other personal services. Second, it would allow massage establishments only as a conditional use in those commercial zoning districts. Then, third, it would prohibit massage establishments as home occupations except as home offices for out-call services. So first, defining massage establishments as distinct from personal services provides essentially the cornerstone to regulate massage establishments separately from other personal service land uses. Thus, those other services could continue without being hindered, if you will, by the regulations that apply specifically to massage, so distinct category.
Okay.
Also, since the massage regulations as provided in Chapter 8.10 already includes a definition of massage establishments, the definition section within Title 17 would simply cross-reference that definition, and so you wouldn't have the internal conflict of different definitions or updating one and not the other in the future, and avoiding redundancy there also. Second, to address the police department's specific concern and allow for greater regulatory authority over massage establishments, such establishments would only be allowed by conditional use permit. In those districts where personal services are currently permitted either by right or as a conditional use, the proposed ordinance would add massage establishments as permitted subject to a conditional use permit. They would no longer be permitted by right, as is the case with most of the districts that are permitted by right, and most all of them. In those specific districts, there's a half a dozen of them, are outlined in your agenda report. Note that massage establishments that have been legally established prior to the effective date of the ordinance may maintain their business consistent with the municipal code provisions concerning non-conforming uses, and also the prescriptive operational requirements contained in the Health and Safety Code. Then, third, the third area addressed by the ordinance is massage establishments as they relate to home occupations. Again, the home occupations ordinance does not specify specific uses which are permitted by right or conditional uses, it's all performance-driven. However, the prescriptive nature of the massage ordinance in Chapter 8 of the Health and Safety Code raises concerns about the city's ability to enforce those requirements in a person's own home. And so, the ordinance would therefore prohibit massage establishments from operating within a person's home, but they would be, they could still have a business, a home occupation would essentially be an office for out-call services.
And that's for new, for new?
That would be for, for new establishments, if, again, the non-conforming uses would apply if somebody's already got a business license.
Right.
The draft ordinance has been prepared with input from the city attorney and the police department, and addresses the police department's concerns that were previously raised to City Council. And in closing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution RZ 216, which in turn provides a recommendation to the council for adoption.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, so, comments?
I was wondering if you could clarify the issue of non-conforming uses for existing businesses? Is this action going to change operating procedures or enforcement procedures or anything at all about the activity of the existing business?
It would not, it's essentially the non-conforming uses has a sunset, if you will, so if they discontinue the use for six months or more, then they cannot re-establish it. So if they let their business essentially expire and not keep it active, it would they would then have to go through the normal use permit process in such cases.
And it's not transferable?
And it's not transferable.
It's tied to that address.
That's correct, right, and, and Title 8, the Health and Safety Code, provides fairly prescriptive requirements, which is really, that's where the police department gets into regulating or monitoring those activities for compliance, so.
Okay.
Very prescriptive in that nature. So that would apply regardless. It's just the use itself as a non-conforming use can continue, but they would have to comply with the operational standards in Chapter 8.10.
Questions, comments?
No questions. I think it's a great improvement from what was before.
Yeah, I'm sure if there were any concerns, it would mainly be from existing, but that's been addressed, so, yeah. But I thought maybe there are people that don't have cars or can't operate, but I'm sure they'd be down here right now if that was an issue, so. Glad that was addressed, okay, great.
And the thing I like about is the use of it from the home. And that was really a weak link in the previous one.
Sure.
So we addressed that, which is good.
Good, okay.
So I just go ahead and make a motion to...
What did, well, public comment, do we have to do that for the record?
There's nobody.
For the record, there's nobody here, so we'll open and close public comment, okay.
A motion second.
Motion to open the public hearings.
Do we have to make a motion if there's no one here?
I think just to...
I think just to recognize that you're opening and then?
We're opening and closing.
Motion second to close?
Okay. We have a motion to recognize?
So I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, I'll second it.
And I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Wait, we didn't?
All in favor to both?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
All in favor for both?
Aye, great.
So I just make a motion to adopt the RZ-2-16 zoning text amendment to modify and add provision to Title 17, and I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Great. Do we have a second?
From City of Brisbane.
Yes, I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Next item, items initiated by staff?
Again, just what we discussed briefly in discussing the scheduling, the next Baylands meeting for the 14th of April, the, some of the economic analysis and fiscal impact work is?
Great.
Will be available probably around the end of this calendar year, this month.
Calendar year.
No, I hope not. And so that'll be available to the commission and the public 10 days, two weeks to 10 days in advance of the meeting, and the consultant who prepared those studies will be present to give a brief summary and take questions and comments, so.
Great, we're all looking forward to that, thank you. Alright, items initiated by the commission, any items? Ring up?
Except we should have more meetings like this.
We should, no, for the record?
We should have more meetings like?
We have a second? Great, thank you.
I go ahead and make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of April 14, 2016, at agreed upon time of 7:00 PM.
I don't have to come at 7, but I'll second that motion anyway.
Right, I guess for the record, alright, all agree, aye.
Aye.
Oh, do I need to read the appeals process portion?
Yes, please, sir.
Okay. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council, and appeal to a planning commission action or a use permit shall be filed with the city clerk no later than six calendar days following the action. An application form and fee is required to file a formal appeal, and for additional information, please contact the city clerk at the local number 415-508-2110. Thank you.
Adjourned.
Good, you're adjourned.